I'd like to call the village board to order for the Village of Ashwabnan for Tuesday, November 26th. Roll call, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Present.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski.
As usual, here.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustees Zerbal and Melczeski are excused for the evening.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the open and closed minutes from October 22nd, regular village board meeting for October 22nd, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the joint village board and finance and personnel meeting on November 12th, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. Limited to five minutes. Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Comments from the public on items not on the agenda will move to number seven, written communications and/or announcements. Anybody have any?
Mr. Martin, could you tell the citizens of Ashwabnan when you're going to quit picking up leaves?
End of the day tomorrow.
That's on the written. Are you stopping then also?
All of the trucks, all of the dump trucks get pulled off tomorrow so that we can get the plows and seltzers attached on them.
Okay.
There is one garbage truck that was repurposed into a leaf truck two years ago. If the weather allows, we'll still continue to pick up some leaves, but we cannot promise that. So folks, folks that are planning to do a raking this weekend, if the weather would get nice, there, there is, there is no guarantee that we're going to be picking leaves up after tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
There's been four, we've made four complete passes through the village and totally understand that the leaves came off late this year and we also had snow so that people weren't able to get out and rake leaves at points in time. Fortunately or unfortunately, we have to get the dump trucks ready for, for the next season that's upon us.
Understandable.
And like I said, we're going to try and get out with that one truck if the weather allows to pick up the final few piles, but.
They did a great job working around the weather. That was very difficult.
We're, we're on our, we're about halfway through a fifth lap right now and we'll do the best we can.
At what point would you recommend, if you have not, so someone who got four piles of leaves out on Sunday, what, at what point would you recommend if we don't see a leaf truck come through to take care of it ourselves?
At the end of the day tomorrow, if the leaves are still there, bring them on down to the compost site right here in Collier Court.
Okay, sounds good.
That would, that'd be my best answer.
Okay. I just, I did receive a communication today. One of our assistants had gotten an email from, a call from a gentleman who lives on Sherry Lane. He just wanted everybody to know how great our street crews have been and how, what a great job they did on the leaf pickup and so I thought that was great. Our guys love to hear the good stuff.
And, and we, we appreciate the residents because they have asked some fantastic questions this year as to how and when and if. We can swing through and, and pick up leaves and they've been very, they've been very understanding and we appreciate that. There's also been some fantastic questions as to how and when and, and can we get out and do, pick up certain areas and it was, it was a lot of fun. So we'll see everybody next year when the leaves fall again.
Yep. Leaves are.
Merry Christmas and happy Thanksgiving.
Leaves are a hot topic. Okay, so I gave that to Patrick to place on file. Okay, so on the consent agenda, number eight, we have action on operators licenses, investment summary report, general fund financial report, October 29, 2019, budgeted expenditures and department reports for November 2019. Anybody want anything pulled or?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number nine, public hearing for the 2020 Village of Ashwabnan proposed budget. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak about the proposed budget? Anybody have questions out there on the budget? Okay, I need.
Need a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Number 10, action items. Action on resolution R 11-2-19, a resolution appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the Village of Ashwabnan for the year 2020 and levying taxes on taxable property in the Village of Ashwabnan.
Move to approve.
Okay. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget as, the proposed budget as presented.
Is this updated from the last, from our meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Those numbers are final.
Can you just tell us, tell the people?
So the total levy stayed the same. So those are the dollars at $12,558,518 that will levy. The tax rate is at $5 and rounds up to $5.68. It's actually put into the system at four or five decimal places. That is up from, it rounded to 5.67 during a budget hearing. And so when we got the final assessment ratio and the final numbers from the state that impacted the tax rate, we went from 1% to 1.12 change in tax rate.
Yeah.
Okay. I need.
We have a motion.
Oh, we have a motion and a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All those in favor of res, approving resolution R 11-2-19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I again, I would like, I would like to thank Allison and Greg. They worked very hard on this and all the department heads came together and worked very hard for our budget, so.
As did you.
Anyway.
Y'all have to be complimenting on that.
Thank you. Okay. 10B, action on class B beer slash class C wine license for Dyna Duarte Reyes DBA El Bistro Taco.
The fine folks at El Bistro Taco recently signed a lease as noted in your green sheet, taking over for the former Greek Boys Giro's location. As such, they would like to add beer and wine to their menu to complement their food. All applicable licensing and fee requirements have been met.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve that class B beer, class C wine for El Bistro Taco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10C, action regarding requested site plan review for My Place Hotel parcel VA-89-92220 Holmgren Way. Aaron.
The requested site plan review approval by village board is for the proposed My Place Hotel, which will be a three-story, 64-room hotel on Holmgren Way immediately south of Nakashimas. The request is on village board agenda because it is within the village center zoning district. Under the village center zoning district, any site plans are required to be reviewed by Site Plan Review Commission, Site Plan Review Committee, Plan Commission and Village Board. Each My Place Hotel room includes a kitchenette with the unit. As depicted on the site plan, the hotel is pulled up to the street, consistent with the plans for the village center district. The exterior materials do meet our requirements in terms of masonry, limited amount of lap siding, so on, so forth. Covered grilling pavilion is located south across the parking lot and a port cachet extends out across the front door, which actually is located on the south side of the building. Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission did recommend approval with staff conditions, which include a limit of two wall signs as required under ordinance. A third may be added with the approval of Site Plan Review Committee. That'd be a separate action of Site Plan Review Committee. The storm lateral to the site must be installed perpendicular to the concrete roadway. Currently it's shown on the plans as being a diagonal. We're trying to limit the distance, which we'd have to break up the concrete on Holmgren Way. Provide a copy to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources of the Notice of Intend Permit for Stormwater to Village Engineering. Identify the driveway width on the plans. Revise proposed hydrant to be painted red and provide a specification on gravel bag inlet control and follow the DNR technical standards for stormwater. Bike and ped did have a recommendation of a bike rack or similar bicycle parking facility, which seems to make sense in this location. Be happy to answer any questions you do have on the project.
This, this was unanimous approval at site plan with the conditions, so.
If there's no further questions, they did a great job on putting that together. Aaron said that there was no complications with the exterior design of it, so I move to approve the project at the My Place Hotel.
With the, with staff.
With the staff conditions.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for My Place Hotel with staff conditions. Any more discussion?
No, but I have a question after the vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Okay.
Talked about this before, but, and I don't remember the exact details, but if, if this hotel, or any hotel for that matter, had been outside of this zoning district, that wouldn't have come here.
That's correct.
Yeah, see, I, I just, boy, I got big trouble with that. We talked about this a couple of years ago and, and I don't know why they don't come here. No, I want, you know, buildings like this, I think Odyssey, Odyssey, the, the, the village board ought to see it and have some approval process. I mean, that's, this is a huge facility. And, and maybe something more than just hotels, and I'm sure any, any structure that's this size ought to be, seems to me anyway, ought to receive some review here.
Well, that's the point of why you created a site plan committee. So I would say it's somewhat redundant in terms of your approval. So either undelegate that authority to site plan and bring it all here. Cause otherwise, I guess, from a staff perspective, in terms of what we're sending businesses through, they're making the three presentations three times. In this particular case, they went to site plan, plan commission and village board. They did the same thing. They, they have come here today very politely, but they have said nothing in all, pretty much each of these. And so now we've run them through three hoops that has made no actual progress or change to their business.
Well, that's not to say everyone's going to be the same. I mean, as, as, who said it? Oh, uh, you, I think you said that they did a good job at, at, at.
Very good job.
In putting it together, but not every, not every facility might be that way. And, and what you're saying is if something goes through a committee, it shouldn't come here. Well, I'm not buying that at all. That's what you said. It goes through site, it goes through site plan, so it shouldn't come here.
Site plan to do that, then why have site plan do it and then?
Well, that's a different set of eyes, that's all.
There are literally three times those.
I don't care. I don't care. It's a diff, site plan is a great committee. They have great people on it. They have great eyes. There are some of them are construction and they've been that way all their lives and they get, I, I sit in as many of those as I can and they do a great job. That's not to say that this board shouldn't get some kind of review. I'm not saying in great detail, but I think we ought to get some kind of review. I mean, I've said this before and I just don't see why we don't. I don't care if they have to come here 10 times.
Well, that makes a big difference though when you're talking about that.
What makes a big difference?
Well, we have to come back all the time.
Well, I, I really don't care. I don't, I don't care. If people want to put a structure like this up in this community, right here or wherever it is, they ought, they ought to have some review by this, it ought to have some review by this board.
Maybe, maybe we need to have a discussion at some point about what goes to what committee because at the last board meeting, there was discussion about not having different things come to this committee or to the board, that it would just go to committee. So I think at some point we need to have a discussion about what goes where. And, and what I said last time was, everything in the sports and entertainment district was brought to the village board because people wanted to see what was happening over here. Cause this was our main development focus, redevelopment focus.
Right.
And now it, last time it was, well, maybe we don't all need to see that. So I think what we need to do on the grander scheme of things is we need to have a meeting and discuss who wants, if you want to see everything at village board, do you want a report coming to village board of what structures are going where? Or do you want all the structure? Maybe we need that discussion.
I think that would be a great discussion. Excuse me. I, I just think this, because it's in this district, because it is in this district, it gets a review here. What if it been built on a corner of Hanson and Onida? Same building. It doesn't come here. We get, we get no look at it. And again, site plan is great. They, they do a wonderful job. I'm not denigrating them whatsoever. But if this building had been six blocks, maybe eight blocks or nine blocks, different, in different location, we wouldn't have seen it. I, I just, I can't buy that. I can't buy that. So anyway, let's move on. We can, we, but I think your idea is a good one, Mary. I think we ought to have a discussion sometime on what comes here and what doesn't.
Okay. Okay. 10D, action on ordinance O 11-2-19, special event or Packer game day on Packer game day parking or Packer game day parking. Okay. Tony.
As you may recall, earlier this year, we made some modifications to our parking ordinance to address really the historical confusion as to what constitutes a Lambo event. And also just to kind of update the parking situation regarding the Title Town District and Lambo Field. Since, or at that time, we made changes to the ordinance that were geared more towards temporary signage, so that there would be no parking by police order with signs that were posted by public work staff. During that, I guess trial run or that changed throughout the season, now the village has experienced individuals taking the temporary signage and crews are spending more time putting signs up as a result of that. So what this ordinance does is propose a change that essentially reverts back to what the no parking was before, which would be no parking on Packer game day. And it would be specific to Packer game day as a, as opposed to a Lambo event. So it's, there's more clarity. And so this would be more for permanent signage.
But it says special event.
Good point, Mark.
It would, there is Packer game day or special event and the special events would still contain the temporary signage.
So.
What about?
Like for the, the kickoff concert, the, for this year, the kickoff concert. So the temporary signage said no parking on Sunday. It said specifically Sunday. So then on Saturday, when everyone's parking for like the concerts going on, it was havoc because everyone was parking on the road because the temporary signage no, said no parking on Sunday. So I guess what would the permanent signs say? No parking on?
Packer game.
Packer game day.
Game day parking.
Just Packer game day.
Right. So it would say no.
Back to what you said and Mark, what you were trying to bring up. Let's have, we got a big basket, a football game coming, a college game. What's that, what's that gonna, how are the people going to react to no parking? Are you going to come up with your temporary signs again?
That's my understanding is then that would be the.
That, those temporary signs will be used on a different event that does not pertain to a Packer.
Correct. It's just that there's not very many of those.
Right.
And initially when we did this, you know, 10 years ago or whatever it was, when it first changed to a Lambo event, we thought there were going to be more events for which we would do the same no parking ban, if you will. And now it's, it's not happening that way. You know, like there's a lot of little events at Lambo Field that create the confusion and we don't need to eliminate parking. We actually want there to be parking.
So the special event parking signs will go up whenever is that the event?
Correct.
So, okay, as long as we understand. All right. I can understand.
There was a lot of confusion as to what was considered a Lambo event. So is it in the parking lot? Is it in the bowl? Is it? So that's why we're going back to what we have.
You have to understand parking or trying to, trying to park down there and keep some semblance, leisure parking cars and, and people's safety too. When we see it firsthand, it's, it's a, it's a mess. I would rather see no parking down there at all, but I know why we do it, you know, for some, some ref center events and everything, but.
It's actually somewhat safer though. I realize there's people inappropriately moving between the cars. They, I understand, but there's people moving between the cars, but that's on the person. Actually, if we had no cars on the street, the cars would be driving faster and the people would still be crossing the streets, not at the crosswalks where they should be, you know?
I totally disagree with that.
I understand that, but that's what the studies say.
Totally disagree.
Spend three hours with us on a Sunday?
Yeah, or a special event.
I move to approve ordinance number 011-2-19.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 011-2-19, special event or Packer game day parking. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Tony, is there any way that we can, in some place in some ordinance, clarify a special event, what's, what we're going to use down there?
I think that gets defined by public safety, doesn't it?
I think there is.
Actual ordinance says for special events, it's going to be no parking by police order. So there will be actual signs saying no parking by police order posted for that. And I'm assuming we're probably still going to use ones that'll say which day.
So what we use on like a special event, when a run comes into town and we don't want someone to park on a road where they can't park, we have signs that say no parking during this time or a day. So that's where the special event is coming in, what you're seeing. So the Department of Public Works is going to have to go out and hang up these signs, temporary signs, like the day before to say, don't park because this obviously a special event's going to happen. We can certainly contact the Packers, I think as well, and get a list and make sure that we have that. But, you know, sometimes we don't know, and I don't know if they know, when something's coming or when something's planned. Rush events are the same way. I mean, next thing you know, you have an event where you have a, overabundance of cars. I mean.
The, the reason I wanted, would like to see it myself anyways, is because I disagree with that on Saturday, when they have that event, that concert, if you will, that's a special event and they allow the parking. And I want clarified so that you know or staff knows, will we consider a special event in that area? It's been classified as a special event for a couple of years and then there's a couple, year or two that it was not a special event. And it was night and day difference on what was, how it was treated down there.
Right. So, so one of the things I think that was erroneous with that event was we were told that was going to be a very small event. If they could get maybe 2,000 people there, they, that they would be happy because of the year before. And of course, what we're talking about is the Steve Miller Band. And if anybody knows anything about Steve Miller, yeah, what we have down there, maybe 30,000 was one of the estimates, 30,000 people. There was a lot of finger pointing and a lot of blaming of certain people. And really, public safety dropped the ball. We should have made sure there was no parking down there and really went on the safe side. And I think that's what we have to do with these special events. If we feel it's going to be anywhere where it could be an issue, what, what we were talking about with cars and whatnot, we'll have to make sure that there is no parking. And again, it's, it's, it's a safety thing more than anything, whether it's people on the road, on, off the road. And you're right. I mean, 27 years of working Packer games, yeah, they're, they're a lot of fun, but it only will take one person to get hit. And we've had, unfortunately, we've had that. So we are also looking at different ways to maybe see what we can do to make that whole area down there even safer. Like you said, with, whether it be roads closed or something like that, but we are actually looking at that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Keep in mind, this special event is for all special events throughout the village. It's not specific to whether there's an event at Lambo Field and it constitutes a special event for which there's no parking. It's cellcoms, fun runs. We have what, 23 fun runs and walks in this community every year. Those no parking signs in all likelihood are put up in most of those cases unless it's, you know, completely out at Ashwabnan or something like that. But so the, the no parking special event is any process that goes through the clerk's office and applies for a special event application. And then there's a resulting no parking in which the sign would be put up for no parking by police order.
Yeah.
Those temporary signs, the one that are being stolen?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. 10E, request for TIF 4 funds to reconfigure the Ashwabnan Sport Complex Plaza area. Rex.
Okay. Administrative staff have been working on this probably for, on and off, for a couple of years now, debating what to do out there and how to handle it. Couple of the issues are obviously the type of layout that's at the patio area right now. It's very maintenance intensive. There's multiple entrances, dozens and dozens of steps in every direction, planters, fountains, large areas that need to be snowblowed. It's a full-time job literally out in the plaza area in the wintertime. That's one of the big issues. Issue number two is you've got two major parking lots when there are big events there. The north parking lot typically fills up quickly. And then people don't know how to get to the south parking lot. And it's literally from me to you away, you know, I mean, in a nutshell, but they don't know how to get there. And so they're driving around, trying to figure out how to get to the other lot. People get frustrated. They just start jumping the curb and running right across the sidewalk, go over to the other parking lot before they actually figure out that they have to exit the north parking lot, loop all the way around on Laden and Fernando and then enter over by the tennis courts. So there's a couple of issues that are, are happening out there that, that we've always thought needed to be corrected. At this point, there, the patio area is starting to show the age where concrete is cracking, railings are rusting very badly. Some work needs to be done on, on planters. And so the discussion was, long-term, is it best just to basically blow this thing up and build it the way it should, should have been done in the first place? You know, now that, now that we see what the patterns are in terms of having a drive-through lane or drive-through lanes as well as something that's very relatively maintenance-free or easy, which could be plowed in the wintertime by our, our trackless. That's also handicap accessible, the route would be, which is what you see here on the, on the diagram. Now, this was going to go before you in December, but I unfortunately am not going to be able to make the December meeting. So I thought it would be best to put it on this village board meeting. It has not gone to finance committee. It certainly can if you wish it to, but I wanted to bring it to you as a group to see if there were any questions, only because I'm, I'm fairly, you know, intimate in terms of how much maintenance it, it takes our crews to, to handle what's going on out there. And if there's any questions on anything, you know, in the packet.
You know, at the park board level, we've been talking about this for years. And it's, it needs to be taken care of. So I mean, I didn't know how we were going to fund this and with the recommendation, I believe probably from staff administration to put in their TIF funding.
So I believe the TIF 4 district is going to be closed out, you know, fairly soon. You know, fairly, within next year or two. And, and the funding in that, what's remaining would be what's used to pay for this.
Yeah, this, this is a maintenance nightmare. It'll probably save a lot of hours on Glenn's time card. Cause it is, it is a maintenance nightmare.
I, I think it's a good idea. I just, that roadway though, that, that you're going to build there, that you're proposing?
Mm-hmm.
I, I just hope that's going to be safe. We should have a railing all the way. People are going to be walking. They're not all going to go in the same entrance way. They're going to, when it goes through that area, it's a little gray. So I just think safety's got to be, got to be a concern there. But otherwise, I think it's, it needs to be done, you know? But otherwise, I think it's, it needs to be done, yeah. Is that gray, is that gray area that kinda loops through the green area, is that a walkway?
That's a 10-foot sidewalk, and so, that's the ingress egress to get in and out of the second floor rink, that plaza area inside between the two rinks. So, instead of having a straight walkway that goes down that has steps, we did a series of switchbacks with no steps that's also handicapped accessible, 'cause if we didn't do it that way, we'd have to have a whole separate walkway off to the side with a lot of switchbacks because of the height differential. And by doing it this way, we incorporated both the main ingress egress with the handicap accessibility requirements, and it can be cleaned off pretty easily when there's a snow.
Okay.
So, is this for approval, Rex, or is this just to move, I mean...
It's really up to you. I mean, it should go to Finance Committee, or you can, you know, like I said, I wanted to be here tonight to try and answer any questions, and so, we can do it either way.
Ultimately, you do need to approve, like, if you wanted to go to Finance and then come back to you again next month, we can do that, but ultimately, we need approval to move forward with Retler to do the actual design of this, and then we will go bid it in the spring or early as we can in terms of them finalizing the design, bid it out, and then it would come back to you for the actual award of bids so we could get this accomplished over the summertime.
So, if we make a motion to proceed with using Retler to produce the bid documents and final...
Final specs, yeah, final design.
And it'll come back to us again for when the bid process comes through?
Correct, to award the actual low bidder for the project.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to proceed with Retler to produce bid documents for bidding the project as presented.
And final design.
And final design. Any discussion?
Rex, I'm not real familiar with that particular area, I don't go there very often, but is that, have you seen other designs besides this and referred to this as being the better one?
Yeah, we've probably come up with about six or seven different designs, Gary, and some of them involved a separate handicap walkway, AD accessible walkway. Some of them, you know, on one side or the other side, some of them had different configurations of the main switchback. This is the latest design. The last design actually had a two-lane pass-through, but talking with Commander Rowling from Public Safety, it was talked about there should be a drop-off lane for safety reasons so that it wouldn't become a bottleneck when people are dropping off. So, then the third pass-through lane, which is really a drop-off lane, was added in. So, I'd probably say we've had at least six or seven variations of this to date.
Okay. The only thing I'm looking at is that the sidewalk going through there, the S, I'm gonna call it an S sidewalk.
Yep.
Why that? That seems confusing to me.
It's basically because of American With Disability Act standards. You have to have a certain slope for people to walk up and down. If we didn't have it like that, we'd have to have a, if we had steps, you know, if we eliminated that snake pattern and had more of a direct line because it's on the second floor.
In other words, there's two elevations, that I didn't know. I understand.
Yeah, because, yeah, it's a second floor exit up on top, and this snakes down to the ground.
Okay, okay.
And so, because of that, without doing it any other way, you'd have to almost have a second ramp.
Okay. 'Cause I'm thinking a direct route would be out the front door to...
Yep, yep.
You've got elevations.
That's how we started out. We started out with a direct shootout and then a separate ADA ramp, and then kinda morphed into combining both of them into one.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
10F, out-of-state school, Randy Toos. Commander, nope, excuse me, Chief Rolling.
Lucky that I am. So, the first school that we have requesting is for investigators, actually Investigator Messerin, kind of on the list, Investigator Jacob, I'll put that right now for the time being, but they're looking to go to a school in Minnesota, it's kind of a one-of-a-kind, really in the nation for this. It only allows, number one, 40 students to attend, and this deals with internet crimes and really the dark web. This is where they're gonna take their computers and kinda be taught, go to the specialized training that's gonna help really any type of computer crime, not only for our department, but really for, throughout the area. So, to have the ability to send these two investigators to this specialized training is pretty remarkable, and again, it's in the state of Minnesota, the travel would be our expense, the villages, but the school itself is paid for, so it certainly helps offset anything that would normally be done like in-state.
I'm hope to approve. This is really an important issue.
Yeah, I agree. Second, we have a motion and a second to approve out-of-state school.
One quick question. Do we have any training budget? Does this, is that what this comes out of, or is this an addition?
That's correct, it comes out of a training budget.
Okay.
So, there's certain trainings throughout the year that they put in for.
Okay.
And again, what helps this from being a bigger cost is because of the fact that the school itself is paid for, so you're really paying for their lodging and their travel and meals.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. G, impact teen driver training, Chief Rolling.
Yes, so again, this is by Public Safety Officer Melanie Lovato. This is something that she's been involved in for several years, and basically what it's for, it's making awareness to our young drivers about distracted driving and some of their poor driving decisions, and she's actually gone through this class and realized, wow, the impact it actually made on her, and I think that's why it's so near and dear to her training this. She trains, again, sophomores at Ashwabon High School. They actually reached out to her and would like her to go to a national school, it's out in California, and this is fully funded, travel, lodging, meals, school. So, again, pretty remarkable to have one of our officers be asked to attend a school like this, and certainly a great cause. We all know young drivers and how impressionable she has been with them, so again, we're asking the permission, again, because it's an out-of-state school, for her to participate, but again, everything is paid for.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the out-of-state training for Officer Lovato. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. H, resolution to expend funds if the Village of Ashwabon should receive a DOT grant for the Main Street Trail. This is an addition. Rex.
For the last couple of months, the village staff has been working on potential grant, a DOT multimodal supplemental grant for the Main Street Trail, which is on a number of our comprehensive plans. Specifically, we're looking at extending the Main Street Trail from Sand Acres Drive eastward to the Highway 41 roundabouts, and as part of the grant application, which we're applying for, and this is a 90-10 grant, which is some really good number, it's a reimbursement type of grant. Once the village expends the funds, then we'll be reimbursed by the DOT. But they obviously need something signed and written by the governing body saying that this is a project that they're, the governing body wants to have happen, and that they're willing to commit their portion of the funds to it. So, that's what the resolution states. It would be submitted with the grant.
Rex, right now isn't there a trail there at all?
There's nothing there right now, Gary.
Nothing, okay.
On a drawing, Rex, I looked at this for some time. What are we proposing, what part of that yellow line are we proposing? I don't, I'm all for it, but I just, I'm confused as to which line this applies to.
It, I don't, I'm assuming you've got a color, do you have a color copy or just black and white?
It's colored, right.
Okay, so it's the white and black checked section that's circled.
Ah. Okay, that's...
So, that's along Main Street from Sand Acres Drive to the roundabout right by Holtshire Brothers.
Okay, because it says proposed box cover and extension there, that's, I guess, maybe what was confusing to me.
Yep, so, there's two, there's a couple of challenges along this route, which is why we can't really go it on our own and are needing to apply for a grant. One of them is the insertion of that box cover extension that goes over a little creek area, and another part of it is actually a bridge over by Holtshire Brothers because that's the Ashwabon Creekway, and that, you know, we need something to go over that, so those are fairly expensive type items.
Okay.
Which is the reason why we're looking for these grants.
All right, so it's that black and white area, that dotted line?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Rex, is that on the north side of the road or the south side?
That's on the south side, Gary.
Okay, all right.
That would be in front of a...
So, in other words, you're...
Yeah, in front of a road truck, in front of Pioneer Credit Union.
Right, right. When they get to the roundabout there, is there ways for pedestrians to cross that? Has that been done when that all was done?
Yep, that's all, all part of the Highway 41 reconstruction project.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll move to approve the, how am I gonna word this, Resolution R 11-1-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R 11-1-19. Comments?
Yes, this, we've talked about this park board for adding into our court plan right now. One of the things that concerns me on here, even though with our discussions and everything, is we get the grant and everything, and we get 90-10 split, but then the village also has to cover right-of-way purchase and utility relocation without any numbers associated with that. That is gonna be expensive, and I don't know if I can support that right now until we get those numbers in to see how much that's gonna be, because you got about two miles worth of roadway there that you're gonna have to purchase. We don't know what it's gonna cost. It's not part of the grant.
McMahon has estimates of probably about $950,000 for the project as a whole with everything.
With that 950,000 including the right-of-way purchase and utility?
Um, there, I know McMahon is saying that the, when I say right-of-way purchase, we're talking two or three feet in addition to what the current right-of-way is. So, we're, and I apologize, Mark, I don't have the numbers right in front of me with that. It's not supposed to be that expensive, but another option, as I put in there, is we can also be using park development funds for right-of-way purchase and for some of these other expenses that the grant may not cover. On top of that, we're also gonna be applying for, from talking with McMahon, we're gonna be resubmitting the TAP application, Transportation Alternatives Program from the DOT, and that could additionally cover some of the expenses that's out there. So, there's a couple of different things at play here, funding mechanisms, where I think we'd still be okay.
We also anticipate that this is another TIF 4 expense, so what you're seeing come through are kind of the last of the projects that we would like to accomplish within that TIF before closure. So, this is one of the keys, and obviously, getting the grant funding makes it far more feasible in conjunction with those TIF funds as opposed to us, you know, once that TIF closes, that opportunity will close, and then we're looking at just funding that all on our own in the future at some point, just duty use and connectivity of that area.
I understand, I, trust me, I like this, like the project and everything, 'cause I know that it's been asked for by the residents in that area to have opportunities to get from that area down into the pier and shopping and that sort of thing, and to the parks and stuff like that. But the way this was worded here, plus purchase, plus right-of-way purchase and utility relocation, it does not say that it's part of the $950,000. That's the problem. I mean, I think that if it's part of it, and we're gonna use park development funds for it, I don't know if I'm in favor of it then. I mean, I don't, I mean, we got enough projects in the parks that we need.
I think primarily it's actually TIF, not park development funds. I think Rex just didn't wanna grab onto the TIF, but it is labeled within our, so we meet every six months to kinda review where we are at with the TIF, what projects we have left to be slated, and this has been one that we attempted to do, I think, last year we applied for, two years ago?
Two years ago, through the TAP program.
And we were not successful, and a large part of not being successful at that time was not having the right-of-way acquired. In addition, Aaron has met with one of the property owners where it's the more substantial or most affected in terms of the right-of-way acquisition due to a steep embankment. They're actually very receptive to that because they don't really enjoy the current maintenance that they have in terms of the steep bank, so we now have some willing property owners. There's not huge amounts of right-of-way that we're actually looking to acquire. I don't think that's gonna be the majority of the cost. You still see the benefit from the actual, this is just to go and get the grant. If you have the grant, yes, you have to move forward, but the grant still far outweighs the other expenditures that we will have.
And everything still comes back to the village board before it moves forward in terms of committing any funding? You know, this is to apply for the grant to see if we can get the grant. Then if we do get the grant, then obviously, then more cost, a more specific cost list will be presented to the board to move forward.
I kinda felt the same way you did, Mark. I made the comment a year and a half ago or so when I, we talked about this. I don't wanna just go willy-nilly by right-of-way from people and then we don't end up putting that trail in, but with the fact that we can move forward if we get the grant and the monies can come from TIF 4 before we close it out, otherwise, it will be very costly to do this.
And I think, Mary, what you just mentioned and what Rex just alluded to is kinda key on that. If you can get the grant, then you can come back and get your estimates on the right-of-way and take a look at it as a project on a whole. You don't wanna expend the money on attempting to get the right-of-way if you can't get the grant.
Right.
It's kind of a balancing act there, Mark, so that's what would happen. If the grant, if we get the grant on it, then you can get the numbers on what it would cost for the right-of-way acquisition, and then decide if you wanna move forward. It's one of those unique projects in that you don't wanna expend too much money gathering stuff if you're not going to get enough money to make it worth your while.
So, even if we get the grant and we get all those estimates and we find out what our costs are on it, if we decide to put it in TIF 4 we can, or general budget, or however we do it, to make determination at that time, if we wanna move forward.
Correct. You can move forward at that time, or you can say, you know what, change your heart, we're not going to do it.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution R 11-1-19. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10I, action on charter ordinance number O 11-1-19, creating primary election. Patrick?
I was doing some election research in the state statutes and came across this item, which one would think is pretty elementary, but it should be reflected in our charter ordinance, that whenever there's three or more candidates which file nominations for a village office, a primary election shall be held for such office. So, this is basically a little cleanup of our charter ordinance.
That is amazing.
Yep.
[laughing]
It was never there.
That you, first of all, studied it.
Well, I was looking at something else. Touche!
Oh, jeez.
I wasn't studying this, I was studying something else, but I came across this, and then I conferred with the city of Green Bay, and lo and behold, there it was in their charter ordinance. We just never had it.
Move to approve charter ordinance number 011-1-19.
There. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve charter ordinance number 011-1-19. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 11, items for next agenda. Number 11, items for next agenda.
I just have a question, Madam President. When, when are we meeting in December?
We are meeting on December 17.
That's what I was afraid of.
Did I interrupt your vacationing?
No, it's just we have tickets for St. Norbert Nights that night and, you know, we get by these tickets three, four months ahead of time and it, it just never fails, never fails. And, and I don't want to miss another meeting, but is it possible, well, I don't know what, we, none of us know what the agenda is going to be like, but if we could start a little early maybe, would that be possible? I know that's not fair to ask for one person to change the meeting, but it's, it's, when we change the meetings around, and I know someone could argue, well, you should have looked, maybe we knew we were going to do it on a 17th, but when you're buying tickets in August, you don't think of that.
We'll let...
Under advisement.
Can you take a look at the agenda?
We'll put it under advisement.
Would that be all right with you?
Yeah.
Allison, can you make 5:30?
We have a finance meeting prior to that meeting, don't we? Yes.
Are you on finance, Allison?
I am.
Can you make 5:30? Or you can? Well, if possible, if possible.
Okay.
If you can't, I'll...
We'll have the under advisement to staff.
I'll sacrifice to not go to the Nights.
You are so kind.
Okay.
We'll talk.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay.
Gosh, you.
I know, I know.
Anything else for next meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. We're done. 7:21.